Let's put the town commission meeting agenda to order on February 28th at seven o'clock. I pledge allegiance to the land of the Americans, and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, in this small.
Thank you once again for instructing and trust us with your decision. And I ask you that you give us your wisdom and discernment for us to make decisions that are best for our citizens. Put ahead protection around our staff, or our police officers, or our fire department, and our teachers here in our town. And we already have all these things during the day.
Zooming.
Just like the reminder, we need to have a motion to approve pension and emergency benefits. That I would like to make.
So I made that motion to approve.
Okay, moved in second and all in favor? All right, next is a proclamation for Women's History Month. And. We're gonna read this, I'm gonna try and make it a short one, too, if you want. Town of Oakland Women's History Month, whereas Women's History Month is an opportunity to celebrate and honor roles of every race, class, and ethnic background who lead. I don't know what's covering the words, leading and contributing to the growth and strength of our nation and its communities. Whereas American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in the sphere of life of the nation by consulting and situating a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside the home. And whereas American women have played a unique role throughout history of the nation by providing a majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation. And whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas American women have been leaders, not only in securing their rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create more fair and just society for all. I can be start on behalf of Town of Oakland, hereby recognized March 2020 as Women's History Month. I don't think we have anybody there to accept the proclamation, but we wanted to.
You brought that up in order of that last paragraph, right?
I brought the money, it fits my personal hour. Let's see what we got here. Okay, we're in public court. Anyone who's here that wishes to speak on a copy that is not on the agenda, now is your opportunity. We asked you to keep your comments to three minutes or less. And for tonight, everybody needs to come to the podium because we need to be able to hear what you're saying as we're doing some. Repair reminder. Okay, so I have any takeers? Consent agenda. Do we have any questions about the consent agenda, or are we ready to vote?
I'll make a motion to approve consent.
Okay, so you moved in seconded. Do we have any questions? I'll open it up to the audience, is there any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? All right, other policy matter, Remington Plaza, 20 Remington Road, design review.
My name is Sarah, I work with Ray D. Graham, where the contractor's name is Department for the. The project I'm presenting to you guys today is the Remington Plaza at 20 Remington Road, where the architectural design. The applicant is Atlas and Pearl Investment LLC, located at 20 Remington Road. The project parcel is approximately one acre in size, and has a future land use separately, and has commercial, a building designation of C1. It's within the urban four-door design district, and the project is proposed for a commercial office building. So this parcel is lot two of the Remington subdivision, which is right here. This parcel gains access off of an easement between lot one and lot three. Fifty is here, and then the John's Landing subdivision is here. There is a brick wall, and there is a noise barrier between fifty and the subject parcel as well, that's substantially. This is a site plan that they are currently proposing. The building is sixty feet by two hundred and twenty-five feet. The green circles that you see on the survey are means of thinking canopy. There's no landscape land orbit property yet, however, it has indicated that they intend to comply with all the towns regulations of where we're keeping. These are the proposed renderings and elevations. These have gone through a few reviews, and these are the final designs that they are moving forward with. These are just some additional defined details for some of the walkways and other architectural details for the building. We found that the plan appeared to be substantially compliant with the Town's Land Development Code and the Design District. Regulation, so the urban four-door design district. The staff recommends approval of these elevations. This was done in front of the maturen review board, who unanimously recommended approval. Their approval came as a condition that if this is not operated later than seven p.m., we'd have concerns with the impacts to the different neighbors. This often led to the N D. Board, who also unanimously recommended approval, but with no conditions. And the reason for no conditions on their approval was, it was determined that the towns and noise ordinance would regulate the concerns that the. The A R P originally had. That's it, I'm available for any questions that anyone.
All right, guys, do you have questions?
There's no land businesses yet, but it'll be office or. Commercial places, so. Medical offices, office, restaurants.
Where's the office?
It kind of tucked away back there, so it doesn't have a lot of site, so it's probably, I would guess, better suited for. That's more of a destination rather than people seeing that in the crowd.
Okay, I'm just thinking because I know that in the factory, I don't know what the town noise ordinance is. Does it nine p.m.? And then turn out at nine p.m. to seven. Someone decided at seven p.m. to nine p.m. I'm just saying, did it in there, there's a restaurant, didn't call it at seven?
No, what's gonna happen is, they were trying to make a recommendation, but the noise ordinance really is gonna cover that, so that's why. We really just need to work out what the noise will be. He and she said something said, yeah, well, it's on the back, so the nine p.m. would govern that, so if it is a restaurant, I don't think there could be any issue.
North of that seven eleven, there's already a building there that is medical, and a little doctor there.
Yeah, that's the parcel here.
I don't think they're open at night. So I don't know. Commissioner Mollin can speak into it, if it bothers the residents, but I haven't heard that.
Well, and the seven eleven is open later, and I don't know whether it's gonna bother everybody, and it's definitely okay.
I like the building, I like the design.
And so that means my mark is.
It's combined with our.
And I think nine o'clock is very equitable.
What does this seven eleven mean, though? Where are they? Don't date yourself. Yeah, that's the point, because I've never heard anyone complain about this.
Because.
Yeah, but the seven eleven would be the closest property, because it's actually the neighbor park, this five, and. So I think that the town noise ordinance is reasonable to go with.
You look like a nice old town.
I got my money, so now we work on.
All right, so any other questions? All right, I need a question, please, Joseph, do you have anything?
No, mayor, don't.
Good question, approved building elevation to Remington Plaza. I'll say.
Okay, so move to second and all in favor? Then you're getting Joseph's vote.
Aye.
I am now.
Be good, be good.
That was a big thing on the agenda except for. Thank you very much, for John's Lake Outfall now update, so my community, Steve, all of you take that.
Be good.
All right, so I'm gonna start basically first. We have. Had an organized stakeholder meeting that we've been trying to do every couple weeks, then Deborah and Kevin have been behind, making sure that they get scheduled. With Oak Park, we had one last Wednesday. There were staff on there from Lake County and from Orange County. Did not have the higher staff, but there was staff on that one county. What I can tell you is. Orange County is already looking into updating these twenty twenty-one study that was done for the John's Lake Outfall. They've already been in contact with C D. M. Smith, who was a consultant on that project. They are working with them on scope. And with that, I think there can be a tangible plan put together, and having Orange County behind that would be huge. A tangible plan for the big picture of the functioning of this canal in the future. So if Orange County can put together a plan, and then get all the stakeholders in the room to talk about how. Proportion of share could be, you know, doled out as well as, you know, interlocal agreements. I think there is some definite positive movement on the big picture on putting it together. And I did have a conversation with John Williams in Winter Garden, letting him know that Orange County was. Certainly opened up their, their decision-making as far as looking into that. And hopefully, Winter Garden will also be part of that, when we get it ready together, as far as looking at the big picture. As far as the immediate issue. With the silt and the erosion that's happened. In the last few years. That is still, nobody's setting up to put money out there at this point. Orange County did have the question, you know, if they were going to be a part of that, they'd have to look at it from their, from their purchasing lens. You know, making sure, and all their criteria, I don't think they're ready to jump into that yet, and or even if they did, it would take a very long amount of time. So we've been having some discussion, and I met with Commissioner Stockfield. Today, I've had a number of conversations with Deborah. I do have some quotes to kind of give order or magnitude, and this is essentially to accomplish. Two things, and it would be to straighten out the canal and have it go to the north in Lake Apaca rather than to the west. Residences, and then also the removal of the silt and sediment, at least some of that silt and sediment that's in front of the resident, and the problem of the residency. I've got one quote that to do both items would be just under a hundred and thirty thousand, but there is a caveat on that because. When we had a discussion on Wednesday, St. John was also on that call. There was an idea that the sediment could be re-applied somewhere else within Lake Apaca, probably on the other side of what's, what's been put there. St. John's would not permit something like that, that sediment needs to be removed and taken.
Away.
Away. So that changes the, the scope of the quotes, so the one twenty-nine five will increase substantially. I've got another quote, and I'm not sure if I'm getting this correct, but if both pieces of this project were done all at once. It would be one forty-seven, four eighty, if you wanted to do just. Straightening out the canal and not doing the sediment side of it, it would be eight thousand for that part. And you come back and start spending a hundred and fifteen thousand to do the entire project, so that would be a hundred and ninety-six. And then the other one was updated to include removing that spill and moving it to another location. It comes in at two hundred and eighty thousand, to be the entire project, or a hundred and eight thousand just to do the, to redirect straight. The, now, the first one, and again, this one needs to be refilled at thirty-eight five to redirect the canal. So just to, just to give you, you know, it's somewhere where magnitude is anywhere from a hundred and thirty thousand to two hundred and eighty thousand in order to accomplish both pieces of this. Immediate issue. You know, the idea to try to stop the bleeding and just redirect the canal forward and plug up, you know, so that it's not going out less anymore. It's certainly something that could be considered. I was talking to Deborah, and I think she's had the same conversation, she was talking about, they might be able to come up with about thirty thousand dollars to put towards this, to be. Put together with other sources of.
I was gonna say, if that, if that number, you're gonna have to have.
My concern is if you try, if you have expectations that the other stakeholders are gonna step in in a very short amount of time, then it's not gonna be a very short amount of time. And most likely, they're not gonna step in until there's a plan, and interlocal agreements, and an actual procurement process and all of that. So I don't, I'm not holding my breath that anybody else could come to the table.
We don't have a rescue in here.
So the idea is. The town possibly could take this on as a project. Get proposals, you know, actually get the project out. Work with, getting an agreement with. Land ever, for their thirty thousand, the town put up thirty thousand, and then look to see if there's any, you know, once the bids come in, if there's. To at least straighten it out, if there's. Some additional money that's needed, maybe look into the H O. I. S. I. picture, because that's the piece, the first piece, if you're just gonna straighten it out, it's gonna be on the Southern object, the late piece. And having them consider, you know, putting in, but I think that's probably a dependable. Goal, if you wanna do something more immediate, is that the town and Landever match funds. The town actually puts it out to bid, manages the project, and then it reverses the town for that piece of a perfect agreement.
Haven't we talked to Parker about voting for grants?
Not this one.
Just so you know, I look at the grant opportunities for this, as well as everything else that the town needs on a regular basis. I actually look yesterday, Monday, every Monday I look.
Well, and grants would be great, and I think grants for the bigger picture, so the bigger picture should happen is. St. John's is also kind of in the boat now, they know what's going on, and if this plan that gets put together by Orange County through the consultant. If they're one of the stakeholders and they are part of that discussion, grant the products can be put together to meet the standards for St. John's grants. And so there's a real opportunity to get some grants for, for the bigger plan, and I think that's attainable for sure, but trying to get a grant.
For a smaller piece.
In the next three to six months.
Well, grants don't leave that quickly, but I just wanna be able to say we're covering, maybe.
Yes.
You know, you never know, it's hard for you to find stuff or everything.
We'll certainly do listen for it, it'll go a lot further. It'll go a lot further, Orange County and some of the other stakeholders are a lot part of that, because St. John's is generally a matching grant. So if everybody's in the boat, and everybody's got a piece of five, St. John's can certainly be a big part of it. So I do think that that will come into focus, but that part of it's gonna take time. So it's, we've got the immediate need of what we do for rainy season and hurricane season. Versus the bigger picture of getting, you know, the, to getting this to be a function of that one, that's the kind of means.
And so we know, I don't know if people is individually about that twelve one thousand dollar figure we had a couple weeks ago, that was only contingent if we did the entire thing.
And we're good for the break.
And remove all of the, and there, that is two hundred and eighteen thousand.
As before, I'm gonna remove the silt from the area, why is St. John's not there, and just move it over the park? Why is St. John's or not?
They, it's not on there, from their community and the way they handle these things, because what, what they were talking about is that movement to the, to the annual web protocol list. And drop it there, but if you're going to remove sediment and silt, they're gonna want it out of the lake and not put some, something like that in the lake.
That's right.
Well, even when it gets redirected, there's still gonna be, until the entirety of the, of the canal is. Is stabilized and maintained, there's still gonna be erosion happening, it's not gonna be going out to the north.
So is there a way we can get it? Momentary, momentary. Remove later, like remove it from there into that place, and then redirect it, and then settle with the. For a chance to consult with St. John, and a year later, move it from that.
I don't disagree with you, but if you want to get this done, trying to go to them for an exception, I think you're gonna spend a lot of time. Want to get this up to meet their requirements on permit. Just saying, I.
And I do have to agree with that, because it is fairly immediate need because of timing, we're not in the March now.
Try and ask for an exception, you could spend a lot of time.
And that gives a start to at least keep it from getting any worse, and then we can do more from there. And I won't say this, we, we need probably meet with your association, Bob, and talk about what we do, and maybe start moving until maybe there's some help, you know, that you like, but then we start that process.
I will contribute.
Certainly. So right now, the lowest asking we have to get it to involve is a hundred and forty-seven five.
Well, it's a hundred and twenty-nine five, but it needs to be updated because of the silt. Right, but you, the other one is, right now, it looks like it's a hundred and forty-seven, four eighty would be the lowest based off of what I have.
Lowest removed outside.
Okay, straight down. Like I said, that'd become some, you know. Cost prohibitive once you get into those, those kind of numbers, if we could get something about at least straightening it out for, you know, a reasonable amount between what. Land ever pulling to come to the table with, and the town would match that, and then if there's a little bit more from the H O. A., maybe we can at least get this. Plugged up and straightened out, so that it doesn't continue to migrate and continue to get worse, which would be the.
Eighty thousand dollar.
Yeah, eight thousand or something.
Maybe about it's thirty-six, thirty-eight.
Well, one is thirty-eight five, and when they update their, their quote, we need to see if that stays, or if another one, if we want to do that as, as a town, we really need to fit it out with our procurement process. We can do that fairly quickly. We already done, we can send it to, as far as.
So right now, we got thirty from the town, thirty from the goal. And then we could get something.
I can't speak for them, I would have to take it to the H O. A., I can speak myself and say that I'd be willing to.
Right now, I'm gonna sixty.
Well, I can do that, we enjoy.
And we don't know at this point if it's gonna be a whole lot more than that, because that one day, that doesn't mean that they're about to eighty.
We're gonna find out.
But in order for us to commit to some, and Landever to commit, we would need some sort of arrangement, actually.
And I, I don't think, it's in the general sense, are there any circulation on that money from my side?
Not that I'm aware of, but that, that will be worked out.
That's something we can talk about.
Yeah, that, that's an issue.
This gets the ball rolling to there, something concrete, this gives. This gives the quickest of moving the, the target and the problem, and getting it any, any worse. And it also gives some food for thought, if you want to live it this way, to Orange County, Winter Garden, the other counties that hope that it's right, putting their foot forward. Let's, you know, everyone, it makes it a little more rhetoric to everybody, and at this point, I'm very pleased with what they're, what they're coming across, what analysis is willing to do.
The quotes are.
Right.
Aggressive. So I think we need to see it through. Because, you know, hopefully, we'll manage to figure out, you know, are reasonable, or participation, or quicker, sooner rather.
So if you're willing, and the consensus is. We'll start the process, and we can get bids, and if the money doesn't come together, we just can cancel it, but we can go ahead and start that process. Get the bids, put together an agreement with Landever, put together, you know, the need to be an agreement with the H O. A., get access to the property, and also if they're gonna contribute, and how that's gonna work. Put those two together, and if it comes back, then if they, if the funding is going to match up to the bids, if there's enough contribution, we can move forward, we can get it worked on.
Yeah, I say we can move forward, it's gonna be a big progress.
And we have a nice location, but we have a part of it. Do you see any issues with this, in terms of, or with that?
No, I will certainly pass back to you tomorrow, but I think we'll simply put any agreements together and.
Could be fairly straightforward, like I said, I think honestly, in a purpose world, you'd have everybody contributing, some of them would be doing the entire project, but. I'm not gonna hold my breath, but you can be able to do that.
You can't wait on the first one.
And every time.
It's only gonna make it worse, and this can turn into, you double me to my.
This, this is top planning, and like I said, in the future, if they put together their plan, they put together the project, and everybody thumbs on to do those four, then. The opportunity becomes much better as far as stabilizing, maintaining all that, because you'll have. I do, I'm optimistic that the town and the county and everybody else will get there, I just know that in the amount of time you're fucking, that's not gonna happen, so.
So. You just, you, you need consent, if you're moving forward, correct?
That's what I was gonna ask, we need a vote, a lot. That's what I was gonna ask. We need a vote, a lot of consent.
And and what'll happen is it'll have to come back to you. We 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 as a we can visit this out, it'll have to come back to you for these agreements as well as. As well as putting a budget in place for this to happen also.
All right, so what I would like to do is move this to the audience. Um. So uh who would like to know?
So uh just from the.
You gotta stand up here because we got a lot.
So this is something that was sitting here, just came to mind when Steve was talking about. Uh everything and 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 I thought Steve about the issue that's something. And I don't know if you support the option that of uh FEMA funds. Because of it being a caused by natural disasters, trying to tie it back to the hurricanes. If there's anything like that, maybe on federal level, state levels, well, possibly.
I don't think we, so I I think, you know, what what I'm hoping that we missed because of the timing they put down for. Um immediately in call. And I'm just confused that this could be a FEMA project with Orange County um and and stakeholder meeting. Um I think there may be some opportunities for some mediation funds uh through the state. If we could get a good plan out, thank God it's gonna be the only other, you know, the only way you get to grant money. Um it is gonna be shown to be a font now and that the impact due to seven hundred houses on John's lake is, you know. Sort of flood issue, I I do believe um that this study will help get us to that point where we might go.
And that might all. You know, pay you back or offset the cost that you would spend at the beginning. Right, breaking this out or whatever it's it's worth of.
And I'm hoping that, you know, with what the the towns put in, begin to at least get this started. Before we look at, you know, credit some of our contribution when everybody else gets on board with the plan. So I I don't think it's money lost, uh but if we wanna get this done, I think this will give you the most immediate ability with you. So and me, I have a mean hour for commitment and all that stuff.
I would agree, I think you you only have a limited amount of time for the ready to start, it's two months away, so, you know.
Other avenues maybe, but. No, but I I agree, yeah, I think there's definitely opportunities um to put together a plan, get it from the board.
Bob, you had your hand up?
Yeah, um Bob Christie, I um. In comment here, so FEMA closed down all the Ian stuff and Orange County was not included in the call. First of all, I thank you all for everything you're doing. Um I know I've been the feisty one that have been really fighting for this, but. I don't have a lot to lose on it, and I appreciate the effort you really are putting in and the consideration. Uh my question to you is. The hesitancy to move forward and take action more quickly, is it a budgeting issue or is it a funding issue? And I ask that very simply because suppose you had the money. Suppose somebody gave you the money and it could be budgeted in such a way that that money was paid back. Over the next two years or three years.
Well, we are giving prices, that's what we completely, we're gonna give prices to people who are less expected to straighten it out. And we do have thirty and thirty.
I think you're talking about the entirety of the whole thing, correct?
Entire of the whole thing, or, you know, obviously, my biggest interest is is the Southern Oaks portion. As well as getting the silk out of the lake, so we have a usable, you know, lake lakefront again, and if that's a hundred and whatever, it's forty nine. Hundred forty seven thousand, if you had that money, could you go forward with it and budget later to pay that money back?
Well, but I think the things that they're talking about and Steve could probably answer the answer, but um it's. The process of uh getting permitting and all of the pieces.
Go down to a hundred and forty seven, you know, when you say get the money back.
Well, I mean, in budgeting from the town, from different agencies or just different, what do you do? Anybody, you you look at.
We would have to accept that that's a hundred and forty eight thousand out of the town. And it's gonna be a mother's, but whether we put it in the budget or not, um and the idea that. Anybody else will pay us back, it's probably not gonna happen unless they're on board right now, they guess to do it, right, we're gonna pay you back. Um the town will be complacent on the book for that hundred and forty eight thousand dollars.
And if they try to get into, you know, the hook, it could take months, years, and we don't want that.
I can tell you that if if you don't follow the constitution, they're looking for an attorney to pay you back. The best thing to do, like on the um entirety, you know, this is just a a single issue, this is the whole one that files. If you want, you know, the the town could right now go out and get even to all that, get even some. But if we do that, I'd rather be looking at the town with the picture. And we can work, then we're talking millions and then. So I'm just kinda hesitant on jumping in too quick and too deep with this. Uh until everybody's kinda in full and then everybody's, you know, got commitment. Um so, you know, it's the commission, if they wanted to take a hundred and forty eight thousand dollars, how could you sure upset? Maybe could go on for roads or something else and put it in the notes. Um but the education getting paid back somewhere along the way is probably not like. Maybe we got a little credit on on future projects, but.
And that's kind of what in the beginning that I'm talking about, well, like, let's take the first step, you couldn't get any worse. Right, except when you're in, you know, it is trying to get you where you're gonna keep the lake again, but you walk for it and then move right way down, but. Um like I said, you know, anyone that comes to me and says, man, I got a huge problem, I need some money and and I don't have an exact thing to give you. Well, you're not gonna need the money.
Right.
So that, so this is why. Yeah, yeah.
And and I didn't know if if I, cause I've never really dealt with county funding and how that, how they do the budgeting and and distribution of funds. How if if they could say, look, we can put this into the twenty three or twenty four budget and we can give you back. Sixty thousand dollars, Orange County, sixty thousand dollars, Lake County, and if it. You know, if if the funds were there now, that you could get that back or recruit that later, but it doesn't work that way.
And it doesn't work that way, but what does work a little bit maybe is the fact that we put that foot forward. And we're investing some money into that, we're negotiating with them, it speeds them up a little bit on the process. That's kind of that's the bet on it.
Well, I think with Orange County, if this is not a specific line item in their budget. Um they're not going to want to put in sixty thousand dollars anyways. If they put in the next year funded twenty three or twenty four budget, um. If we don't have a reason right now, it says, hey, they're gonna reimburse us and and they're they're okay with having procurement and they're okay with the project and. Then too many loopholes, you know, there's there's a bunch of negotiations that have to happen, they still need. And you you run into the the bureaucracy of 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 that. If you get it in the budget, like what they what they need to do now, the study. Get the scope, get that, and they're gonna they're gonna get that in the budget. And then we'll have something to work off the plan.
Can I interrupt for one second? This has nothing to do with your conversation, but you guys, I don't think you're loud enough for at least it's really gonna. Have a hard time putting minutes together, so pop loud.
And there's a lot of lot of expectations they have to reimburse us and. Uh we spent an extra four months just trying to get to that point where we. If they even entertain for that.
Go to like Arm County, Winter Garden, and the code. And say, hey, we're the dire city, we need to do something in the next couple of months, but we got thirty thousand from Oakland, thirty thousand from. Oakland Park, we can get thirty thousand each of those, it wouldn't. You you couldn't get them up.
We like trying to have the two run on the line and even say. How quickly with the commission? It's gonna be the same kind of situation, they're gonna have to get approval, different levels, commission. Um it it comes up, it's not just a two covers a check, are you are you following our procurement procedures? Did you get all the wrong right quotes? Did let's see.
They gotta go a bunch of times.
And that doesn't mean that we get it straight about and say we bought high and we can say.
If 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 on the front end, let's say Orange County puts together this plan and everybody agrees to, hey, these are great projects, it's stabilized, it's all created the maintenance. And then plan and then they, everybody says, okay, here's an unlawful agreement, and your share is twenty two percent based off of this criteria. Then they sign off on it, Orange County signs off, we sign off on it, everybody knows, let's go. And in in that agreement, it'll say exactly how the project's gonna work, who's gonna bid it out, all that kind of stuff.
I think we, I think we.
Okay, thank you. One fire at a time. One fire at a time, and get the first fight out, straighten it out, in my opinion. Everyone will wanna get participated, at least they see we're moving forward. And then, again, I still think that we can talk a thing out and saying, let's keep the stuff. On that peninsula, and we have not, well, we're not okay with that.
Yeah.
I mean, things like that.
The this gotta have a clear um. A clear plan of what needs to happen. And if you start like, well, we might do this, we might, you just need to hit it. Saint John, this is what happened, you may well fit it out that way, cause it's gonna be a lot quicker about.
Try to get it done, so. Well, I would say just make sure in the next week that we try to put this together, then we get that dependent answer from Saint John.
I I was pretty dependent on it. Didn't leave a whole lot. Pretty good for people.
It was it was a pretty black one, um. All right, the quotes that we have, I'm sorry, the quotes that we we have, are those from that was put together, or is that not something that that just get you a head start?
It just it just do have that. We really need to put it out as the town um and then get it back and 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 just, you know, it all, you know.
Okay, so we have a direction. All right, um so I know you want to see, right?
If you want me to.
Sure. Um I want people to understand what your expertise is.
He has the technical tape to close up.
I know I'm gonna be around white and I gotta, yeah. My name is Joe Dunn, um I live in the five twenty five Lake Point Circle in Winter Garden. And I spend a lot of time in Oakland, so I wanted to come in. I and I'm gonna give you some time back. Uh my background is I'm retired from uh aerospace, they get it from Lockheed Martin. Um I'm used to working on very complex problems for twenty five years. I live on Lake Poppisso. It's my backyard literally, which is why I'm gonna be a past president of Friends Lake Poppisso, and I'm on the board of directors. I just wanna make two comments. One, in the micro sense, I think you've got a great plan, you're set to the media, it is it's spot on. Stop the bleeding and then come up with some creative ways to move it, move the uh the silk uh and then micro. But what I'm also very grateful from Friends Lake Poppisso perspective is your silver to the natural problem. Because this is a very, very complex outfall and whatever sliver you pick, it's got a different solution. My experience at Lockheed Martin was that if you buy a simple solution to a complex problem, sometimes you make the problem work. So yeah, kudos to you for coming up with a short term game plan. And the town has been working in the background independently with a lot of stakeholders, so the Saint John's, with Orange County, all different levels. With Commissioner Wilson, so I I think you're doing exactly the right things and Fola is grateful for that and will support you any way we can. And I don't know how I could convince Saint John River Water Manager to allow silk to stay there for a while, but because I I just mentioned. Regulators tend to be very pedantic and rules driven, so if they kind of said to Steve, nah. Uh I don't have that kind of way to move.
And Charlie, we've been up here in these meetings too. Right? No, I mean, where it's.
Oh, yeah, 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 no, no, it's um. Steve and I went up to see the executive director of Saint John's and, yeah, so we've been involved and in the background, but. The God bless kind of Oakland for taking the lead.
So I I just wanna, you know, Joe adds another perspective to what's going on. And um, you know, I think we need those perspectives.
Thank you, Joe. Any way we can.
All right, um anybody else wanna talk? Yes, sir.
If there's a tavern, but if there's a tavern. Close at nine o'clock, it feels like a seniors tavern, so. We get tired and we don't.
Dinner at three. But I mean, I'm sure that we had something that needed to be settled, except with with that, but we generally.
But we have. All right, so we have that, we're ready to move on now, but.
Oh, Nancy, come on up, sorry, I got. Okay, Nancy Ross is telling, um just to repeat the bit that I know Jack is a weird promise to you. We've got a homeowner, yes. Oh, okay, I didn't know, no, we didn't talk about it, Stephen, I'm calling. Okay, we've got a homeowner and we're explaining, who this eastern foundation wall. Is right at the canal wall, which is deteriorating quickly. And we just found out recently that he's been packing, you know, stone and different things to try to support that wall. To keep this foundation from cracking, and we have an even more immediate urgency than you're talking about. And I understand on this, I was in a meeting with Jack and our agent, we were talking. About this and um our homeowner is getting pretty nervous.
Thank you, thank you for bringing that up, and he did, he did send an email out, very, very well spoken. Yeah, not that it's supposed, but um he he did a very good job of laying out the issue that he had. And that was Orange County and and I was copying on that, Jack, copy of that. Um and as to the center urgency he has with his foundation and. And he's right at the corner there where the uh canal goes under the West Orange Trail, so. He's actually been talking about it creates a whirlpool right there with all the water that's going up. So he definitely is having some some issues and and from what I can gather. He's had quite a bit of erosion up along that side of the canal. But Orange County is very much aware of that also, and and as a town, that Orange County actually has. I believe in easement along that area, so um. It 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 is on the record and it it is being considered as part of this very plan.
Yeah, and that's the thing that um, you know, I think we've talked about a little bit, this brings it um to the floor. Is we have unintended consequences. We have people like this homeowner and we have people on John's lake, and we have to, you know, if there's any unintended consequences of doing this. On John's lake, we have to consider that. So I mean, this isn't a one. We know. And one more quick thing. Aw, for her feelings, um. Our H O A does not have a reserve fund. So the point being, we talked about this at the meeting where Jack was with Deborah and and all of us, and um we wanted to help him. But we don't have a reserve fund to throw out ten thousand dollars to build up that wall with whatever it takes. They even mentioned to Steve, and Deborah brought up something about these pillows that you could fill with soil and so on and so forth, and. I've talked to Steve about all the dirt along Sadler, you know, could we move that dirt over there and fill up these pillows, and Deborah said she didn't know. If they would even told her about it, it was just something she had talked about, but. Just for the record, we don't have that many, no reserve fund, or we would jump in and help him right away.
Well, there's also the immediacy of the two former ponds that we're planning on, that. The firms, the ponds are being deteriorated and I think if we start going up the canal. There's gonna be that immediacy with everyone that's on the wall, that's why there is no stopping. Okay, we got a breakdown, he's gonna go the right way, there is no top and saying, let's get ready to use the net. All of these people are talking about is is take all of the stakeholders to be a part of it, some of the specs, it's gonna be here. You're gonna start talking about some serious funding needs with this stabilization that moves to happen.
Well, like, again, my, once something gets started, it wakes the bear up a little bit more and.
But if you're if you're um, your backyard is falling into a what, it's the same, it's.
But your house is going, that's. But I think Orange County is actually out there today.
But I think Orange County was actually out there today, um, doing some things through their, I don't know what's their canal drainage people, but.
Well, and they, yeah, they did put on notice about the trail also, that they need to make sure that. There aren't any, uh, issues with the with the trail or the pipes that go underneath the ground, so they they have, they are, they are loving this, so.
Well, and I'd like to hear kind of their opinion too, he said he's been out there today the last couple of days, and I'd like to give her opinion, and well, I think then we'll get myself tomorrow until we got.
I I expect that that they get information and what the stateholder means that we'll get more information out on that.
Yeah, how many houses can potentially be affected at John's?
It's my understanding, there's seven hundred houses on around John's Lake.
But they're not all ours, we're not a part of.
But some of the older houses, like in the section of Oakland that's still in accounting, uh, that if you go down, uh, and some of those on the right, that's. That's not been ever been annexed into the town, but still counting, some of those are at lower elevations and then. If the water bar ever hit that ninety nine foot female level over there, they would probably have water in their houses.
Right, is that like a hundred year storm?
Yeah, I I I believe so, and after the end, it's over ninety eight, but ninety nine foot is that female level what they're talking, it's that would be. And they've been seven hundred houses, John's Lake, I don't think, they're like, the old old ones kind of blow together. They've all blown into John's Lake, I don't know how much of them back up to those, but I guess it's that part.
So then it's just the reputation going on and on with the way our.
They don't get me wrong, uh, the canal only moves so much water, and if you get a hundred year event. You may still have some of these problems, but if you haven't made sure with this canal that leaves it functioning to a full capacity. Then I think you're running the problem.
Right.
There could be an event that would cause all of the worst case scenarios we're talking about, even if it's running. At totally, at you know, efficient as possible, but it really needs to be at. At the expected level, and I don't think that's worth that, and if you try to run it at the expected level, you're you're just tearing it up. So, because of the erosion, because it's not, there there shouldn't be a lot of basis to it, so we can we can stop talking about it, but. But, yeah, we're, there there should be a lot of.
Well, I think that it's a perfect example of. That canal was dug without any permission permits, anything, it's done a year ago. Um, it was a short term fix to water citrus. Citrus line away, and everybody who had an interest in the canal line away.
Um, this has been legitimized that a. Has now fallen down slowly, and so it it needs to be treated as, so.
Right, but it's just an example of looking at the short term, us not, you know, us as a, um. As a county or whatever you want, as a governmental led country. That there should have been permitting involved, and there wasn't. You know, it's nobody's fault, and it's the short term we solve to the long term.
But like everything else, here we are, so.
Yes.
Figure out.
But you should be, you know, pass some forms of present, and you should learn from our mistakes. Who's ever there?
Has it flooded up at all, since we haven't had any rainers, it's still growing. It has, lake is it's actually down, so it looks like it's getting more, but it's the sand is, it's fairly clear. Um, it continues to push the thing that is there to the west. Um. But yeah, the water flow right now is is definitely down. But and and I think that's really a good thing, because God forbid, you know, the the gentleman and women's for which are landing and and that all repent upon, I mean. I don't, their their area is is as important as anybody else's. Um, in in doing it, but yeah, that's just, it's taking everything out, it's water.
Alright, we're done reading this horse to death, unless anybody else has. Anything to add? Alright, you have consensus of continuing to move forward. Um, and get some more quotes that have, uh, more detail like this. So, we're good with that, um, unless we have anything else to talk about, or to town manager report?
Uh, I keep it short, we've got the takeover of the trail of, um, seventeen. It was, it was a pretty cool event, it's the first one that helped us on teleconference. Um, this is in place for a year now, and, you know, I think I've bigger things to tell them, but it was a good event, a lot of trail managers out there and. Um, and the tables out there, and it's a pretty cool. Um, and then, uh, March sixteen, uh, town road phone is hosting the track time lunch. Uh, we are working on a, uh, a sponsor, I think we've got somebody lined up. And, uh, so we'll have, you know, track county lunch here, we have any ball.
March sixteen, uh, the laser uniform place over out for that would happen well, and I haven't seen anything officially come through yet, but it seems like you'll get it. If it's not on the calendar, you're not gonna see.
We'll we'll take care of that. So, sounds working, but I'm not together, so.
Okay, we have, um, commissioner, uh, reports, so I'm gonna start with Joseph, do you have anything?
No, Mayor, nothing here.
Alright, thank you.
Sounds so just fine there, Joseph.
Alright, so.
Um, like to thank Principal Wire and Jack. I paid a surprise visit for the Black History Month, uh, event they had open today. They went to the, all teachers classes and how that event was, it was great, I think it was just about that in person. What we used to do for the fifth graders and bring them here to the city hall.
Oh, that's right.
Station, now everyone's involved, first grade, fifth grade, kindergarten, all the parents were super excited that. Everybody had to participate, and they all ran at the same time with different classroom, and whoever you wanna know about. Didn't have to just be Martin Luther King, anybody, personal walker, that was, it was great, pretty. Very well coordinated, and I I really enjoyed it.
Well, um, I I think that we'll have to talk about, you know, what things you want us at, we, you know, and we'll we'll come. So, just let us know.
Great job, yeah.
Yeah, good job, alright, Ricky?
I don't have any.
We're gonna talk about, cool, we have, well, we're, 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 we'll see in the next couple of weeks, we're fixing to try to change a little bit of the. My laws for pushback, so we'll run away, you guys, hey, you did work on that, you did, so, uh.
Well, we'll just sign off on safety and some.
Yes, safety and the, um, law. So, uh, there's, you know, there's a lot of, I would just.
Alright, um, I don't think, I haven't been. When I was there, we talked about that at the last meeting, um, it was a nice meeting, just an update to. So he knows what's going on, he's back in our district, or his district is back here, and, um. So we had a lot of good conversations with a lot of people that are at the state that go well.
Dan Wester will be here upcoming in March for any residents that have any personal issues. Yeah, they usually have to pause that themselves, we just provide them space.
Right.
Uh, but he will be here sometime during March.
And last week, this week, I guess, was Rick Scott had off the sour chair, which doesn't mean he's there, but back there.
Again, he had staff here on Monday, um, and when I said they, we have to pause it with their channels and we just provide them space.
Will it be Daniel Webster or just that?
It'll be probably just that.
So, we're happy to provide the space, and if it helps any of our residents, then we agree. I sure could have used it if I, you know, I soldiered on, but social security is no joke. You get lost in the shuffle. Well, I mean, you're probably gonna explore it.
Be quiet.
Taking it while I'm painting. Alright, so, um, Joseph, do you wanna, uh, dismiss us from afar?
Alrighty, if our hearts and minds are satisfied, we can adjourn, it is eight oh two P M.
Awesome.
Bye bye.
Uh, you sound much better.